We're all set. Call the meeting of City Council for October 12th, 2016 to order. Larry, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
I want to stand. Ma'am, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Strachey, Madrigal.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ornstein.
Here.
Addison, Speaker Burton, and Councilmember Madrigal. Or I mean Strong, excuse me.
You want to go through that again? Okay. Public, you see me. Public communications, City Council welcomes participations in its meetings. Comm谏should be limited to three minutes per person, so that everyone be given an opportunity to be heard, to expedite matters and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons, I see a lot of groups here, wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the City Council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. Is there anybody who has any public matters they want to discuss? Okay. I'm sorry, public communication. Public matters. Presentation of proclamation recognizing support your local Chamber of Commerce Day on October 19th, 2016. And I shall read said proclamation. Proclamation of the Willets City Council recognizing and promoting support your local Chamber of Commerce Day, October 19th, 2016. Whereas the Willets Chamber of Commerce has served the greater Willets community since 1926, striving to make Willets a better place to live, work, and play. And whereas the Chamber, through its board, staff, and many volunteers, hosts a variety of workshops, programs, and events to support and benefit the local economy and community, and aiming to approve, improve the quality of life in Willets. And whereas Chamber committees such as the Ambassador Committee promoting membership and the Local First Committee promoting our local economy through community outreach and education are key to a sustainable local economy. And whereas the North County Women in Business promotes the success of women in business through mentoring, educational workshops, business spotlights, and relevant dialogue in management and leadership issues. And whereas annual events such as the Willets Community Festival or Car Show and the Willets Hometown Celebration kicks off the Willets Frontier Days festivities provide fun-filled character that is part of the fabric of our diverse community. And whereas the Chamber is a vital organization in our community whose sphere reaches every corner of the greater Willets area. Now therefore, I, Ron Ornstein, Vice Mayor of the City of Willets, do hereby proclaim October 19th, 2016 as support your local Chamber of Commerce Day in the City of Willets, and encourage everyone to support the Willets Chamber of Commerce and all of its members. I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Willets to be affixed this 12th day of October 2016. Is there anybody here from the Chamber? Oh yeah, I recognize you.
He's funny, and he's a funny guy.
I am. I mean, all the serious stuff we talk about, liberty is important.
I told someone I got a picture. I wonder who that might be.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
And then look at their smile.
Yeah, we do this. Yes, proper. It's almost like you know how to do this. Maybe.
Just a couple things, yes.
So Council, Adrian, Jim, thank you so much for this. This is, this means a lot. Adrian, thank you for bringing it to our attention. This is something that is very new, and when it got brought to our attention, it was like, God, man, I've been here for 30 years and I didn't know anything about this. So it's, it's very wonderful. The other thing that we're doing is we'd like to invite the community to an open house that we're going to have on the 19th, which is next week, from 2:00 to 4:00. And what, who we're going to have there are our board members, but most importantly, one of our members. And our member, Paul Kraus, has been a member for probably 40 or more years, but he is our oldest member. He is 90, as he said today, 95 and a half. That sounds like, you know, I remember when I was like six, I was like, I'm six and two quarters. So this is really cool. He is a wonderful man, and he's quite entertaining. So I hope that you all can come by. You'll see our office as it is right now, and before it gets remodeled, and we're looking forward to that, so stay tuned for the next chapter. I'd like to introduce my board members that are here. Carolyn Harger and Pam Baskin, our newest board member, as well as April Twiddell, who is our Chair of the Ambassador Committee. So it is, you know, it runs primarily with volunteers, and it's, it's been my pleasure to serve the Willets Chamber of Commerce. And it's wonderful to have people like that that are dedicated in our community, and it's also wonderful to have the support from the city, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to add, I know we have a time limit for tonight's meeting, but I just want to thank Lynn for the countless hours that you do, but also that our Chamber has really revitalized now with new board members, and the mixers have been wonderful. You know, we had the opportunity to be at the Senior Center this, most recently, and I just encourage the whole community to really utilize the resources that the Chamber has to offer.
And stay tuned, we've got more coming.
Oh, there's, there is more coming. And I just, as a community member, use their calendar today. It's always, it's often requested to not have events, community events on the same night. You know, often there would be the crab dinner at the fire department at the same night as something else, and you couldn't physically go to both. By using the Chamber's website, you can just put in your event so that community members can go and see, you know, what else is happening on that day, so that we can support each other. It is working, it is on, you submit it yourself, and it's super easy.
Good, good. That's always been a problem.
It's great, yeah.
Which is a good thing, because there's a lot of things going on in this town, so it's one of those. Okay, let's move on. Item B, Notice Public Hearing, Discussion and Possible Adoption of Resolution, Amending Charges and Certain Fees and Charges Retroactive to September 1st, 2016. So I have Susie's name on this, but who wants to?
Want to come on up?
Yeah, she's sitting way in. She figured she would be anonymous tonight.
I'm actually presenting these rates and fees for our Parks Department and Waste Water Department. They're requesting that we amend our rates and fees in two areas, and one is in the septic rece, or the, I'm sorry. I have to fill it out.
Sewer special fees.
Yeah, septic receiving.
Yeah, the sewer special fees, they're asking, no.
No, not septic, that's not on this tonight.
No. It's.
Truck fill station and the sewer fund sewer special fee.
Right, the reprogram charge for non-payment.
Right.
We have this in every other department, and it was simply missing in this department, and that they ask that we add this in to keep everything consistent with the fullkeeping issue when we, when we originally brought the rates and fees to the council. And the second thing is the access fee and the additional fee. We're currently charging $30 per load and a penny and a half per gallon. And once we started with this, we realized that we were way out of any arena of being competitive at all with Ukiah or Leightonville, and so they're requesting that we reduce it. Once we, once we talked to our customers about the possibility of reducing it, we got a lot more interest, and we've more than doubled our loads. And I just, I just think that, I think Leightonville's, Ukiah charges $10 for a truckload, and theirs is potable water, while ours is non-potable. So there's that, and then Leightonville is, I can't remember exactly what they're, but it was still, we weren't able to be competitive with either one of them. So by reducing this from the typical load that we are charging currently with our current rates of approximately $75 a load, and this would be reducing it to $51 a load, but it's just, yeah, the only way that we're going to be competitive.
Well, and it does, you know, those other communities have different water sources than we do, frankly, so I mean, it just, it behooves us to potentially be a little bit, like a little bit more, but not drastically.
Right, right.
Yeah, because we want, we want that income. But we also have, you know, we're, I wouldn't support necessarily, you know, taking our potable water and, yeah.
Right. And we don't actually have it in our limits that allow us to resell our potable water anyway.
Susie, Larry, did you have something you wanted to say?
No.
Okay. I visited a water plant yesterday, and I had a conversation with Scott about this, and he explained to me, not only was it theoretical possibility that we're going to get, sell more water, but it's an actuality. Did you, you're aware of that?
We are aware of that.
I think it's important to tell the story.
Do you want to tell the story, or me too?
Yeah, you.
The first two weeks in August, we sold 20 loads, but once we talked about reducing the dollar amount, we more than quadrupled those numbers in September.
And that's before any action was actually taken? That was on anticipation that the price was going to be lowered?
Right.
And, and was there an indication that if it's passed, if it is actually lowered, that this quadrupled figure might even become higher?
Become higher, because right now, our customers are going off the assumption that we might go lower, but we still haven't said, yes, we are going lower because.
And you're getting this from the actual people who buy the water?
Yes.
Okay.
And if we vote on this tonight, does it go into effect right away?
We're hoping to make it retro to September 1st.
Right.
Okay.
So they haven't been billed yet, but they will be billed on whatever the new rate will be?
We, we will bill October 15th for all of September calls.
Right.
After the public hearing, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Sure. Anybody in the public who would like to comment on this? Okay. Bring it back up here. Anything from our group?
I will move that we adopt a resolution approving city fees and charges effective September 1st, 2016.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other conversation? Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Councilmembers Strachey, Madrigal.
Yes.
Yes.
There's just so many of us.
Okay. Let me see here. Okay, we have the consent calendar, and we have pulled item 4A and 4D.
I'll move we approve the consent calendar?
Second it.
Okay, that's without 4A and 4D, correct? Okay. Let's just do a voice vote on this one. All in favor of?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, okay. If you guys want to get home, guys. Okay, we have.
I haven't had any.
Okay.
It's irrelevant.
We have informational reports of building inspection activity, business license update from Caltrans, any comments, anybody? I have a feeling not. Right to appeal, persons who are dissatisfied with the decision to the City Council may have the right to review that decision by a court. The city has adopted Section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits the nominated time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be additionally, judicially challenged. We have no commissions, agencies, or authorities, city manager, or any reports.
Yes. Let's see. Well, I think everybody has seen that more trees have been, have come down in City Park, and we've talked about this at a number of meetings about the need to do this, and I brought some, a visual for everyone. This was just cut down the other day. And so although the, you know, on the outside, they look solid, in fact, many of them are hollow inside, and that is the reason why they're having to come down, because it's a major hazard issue. We have new trees arriving on the 20th of this, 20th of this month, six of them that will go in the center section, and they're in 24-inch boxes, so they'll be more substantial. And hopefully that will, you know, help people to understand that we are replanting. In the meanwhile, our Public Works Maintenance Crew will be working on irrigation and other, you know, repairs and improvements before the trees go in. Let's see, we've had, last Friday, staff took a field trip to Sonoma to visit Real Care, who is our broker for the city's medical insurance and dental and vision and all of that. And then today, we had training here on insurance and all different aspects of insurance, you attended that one, workers' comp. So they come to Willets every so often, and today, many of our employees got to go to that. Also, last Thursday, we had a REMF Board meeting, and Susie attended that. I don't know if there was anything in particular you wanted to note about that?
I don't know.
Okay, great. Moving on, I've been talking with the Willets Unified School District Superintendent Mark Westerberg about our Bechtel Creek, excuse me, Bechtel Grove Middle School gym, which is city building, and we have a shared contract with the school district for that facility, as well as our pool and our tennis courts. And so since he's new, and some of these contracts need to be updated, and some things need to be addressed, we've been having some conversation and researching the cost of making some repairs, and so I'll have more on that at a later date.
I just want to say I appreciate that, because I have gotten questions about the community of our tennis courts, and they'll be happy to, they were worried that maybe it had gotten.
No, I mean, you know, as we go through the budget process.
I think they had some turnover, yeah, at the school.
They, they did.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm really happy with the conversations that Mark and I have been having. He's very interested in seeing some things happen, and so having that partnership certainly makes it more conducive to figure out how to get these repairs done, because they are pretty costly. Let's see, Dusty and Dan Ramsey, who's our Airport Manager, and I have been having a series of meetings regarding our airport layout plan, and Dusty probably have more to report on that. We don't really hear much about the airport at council meetings, but, you know, we have an airport and.
That's a good news.
No news is good news often, but we do have a number of projects that are long-term projects that are moving along. And then a couple of events coming up. Next Monday, on the 17th, from 2:00 to 3:30, Assemblyman Jim Wood will be here in town at Burke House Coffee for a meet and greet. And then on Tuesday, October 25th, is the Candidates Forum for City Council Candidates, and that will be at the Grange. I believe that's at 6:30?
What time is that?
6:30.
I'm not sure yet. We have it booked at both places.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure.
So be watching the newspaper, because I guess they have both the Community Center and the Grange booked for that.
Oh, because Freddie Wong said the Grange.
Oh, okay.
So there you go.
Good, perfect. All right.
Okay. Department of Recommendations, City Clerk, anything? Okay, Finance, Susan?
Okay, as Adrian mentioned, we had a REMF meeting last, it was a board meeting last Thursday, and the REMF consists of 15 cities, right, all the way from down to Sonoma and up to Yurig and Arcata. We became self-insured with our health insurance program last July, and at the six-month point, they looked at where we stood, and while we didn't have the fund balance that they hoped for at the end of the six months, we're still in a positive situation, and, but they're going to be looking and making sure that we're still on the right track by checking and seeing what it would cost to go back and not be self-insured and just be fully covered by a plan, and just to make sure that we're not making mistakes, so they're on top of that. I think that was the big thing that came out of the REMF meeting. November 7th through the 10th, the Finance Department is going to be getting a server update on their finance software, so we'll be without access to the servers for approximately four hours, and won't have access to our cash register. We will have the ability to give out hand receipts, which is what we'll have to do during those four hours, and we picked the slowest time of the month to do that, so November 7th through the 10th, we're, we'll be down with our finance system.
And I'm assuming you'll post that?
We will, yeah.
Like, maybe pay your bill today and not tomorrow?
Yeah. I know it's a check, it's really not an issue. Same with the credit card, we give you a receipt right there. The auditors will be back the first week of December, the first week they were here to visit and look at our processes and our policies, and when they come back in December, they'll be digging into the numbers and making sure that everything's good there. The Finance Department staff has been working to streamline our billing processes and have been working with our software vendor to be able to do all of our billing on one system. Right now, we have some Excel, some QuickBooks, and some more. So putting all of that together in one place where we can get good reports and get those out, really excited about that. And additionally, we've been working on setting up our website to talk to our finance system so that we can get payments made on our website. People, our customers can log in and pay it there if they choose to, there's a pay-by-phone if they want to call and do a check-by-phone there, there's a number that they can do that. And also e-billing, if any customers are looking into that option. I know a lot of people have called and asked for it, so these are all things that we're working for. We're in our early stages, but we're hoping to have it available by January 1st and hopefully earlier, but I don't want to, I don't want to, no, say something that I can't promise. So January 1st.
That's really exciting, Susie.
It's very exciting.
Good job.
We're all excited.
Are we getting water?
I know.
Yeah, and it's not an additional expense to the city. In fact, we'll probably see a little bit of a savings. It's not an additional expense to the customer. In fact, they'll probably see a little bit of savings. I think it's a win-win for everyone. So anyways, we'll keep you posted.
Good. Thank you.
Great job.
Okay, Human Resources, I don't see our human resourcer. Do you have anything?
She's been quite busy. She's been conducting interviews with every employee. She's not through all of them yet, but just to get to know them, get feedback on various things, and get a better understanding of what they do and what's important to them. She's also been going to a lot of training. She went to a police recruitment and retention training a couple of weeks back. She's going to a CalPERS training in a couple of weeks, and then to the annual CalPERS Conference, which is the big, the statewide association for public employers' labor relations. And we're going to be implementing some new programs in the coming months.
Good.
Employee of the Month program, and a newsletter, and.
Good.
And we have had this website project on the back burner, because we haven't had the staff resource to really see that through, and she wants to take that on.
Oh, that'd be good.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Adrian was able to bring Karen to the Women in Business networking thing that the Chamber does that was mentioned earlier, and she had very positive things to say about city staff, just that she was really impressed with City of Willets employees and how committed they are to making our community better. Was, I, I thought it was appreciated by the group, yeah.
Good, good. Okay, Mr. Lance?
No report, that's a division rather.
Oh.
Don't take that.
Minimal and illegal.
What do they say? It's too, it's quiet, it's too quiet. Okay, City Council and, no, I'm sorry, yeah, Public Safety, hold on. Jerry?
Well, Sergeant Donnie here does a pretty good job of putting up our police log on, with the newspapers, and, but we've been really hit hard lately with our folks from all over the world visiting us, and the complaints have come in from stores. We, they call, we show up, and depending on what the allegations are, deal with them. So that is the time of year, and we're responding to those complaints as they come in. Trying to think, we were up assisting the Sheriff's Department up in Brook Trails the other day. A gentleman broke into a house up there, and basically, it's been a lot of traffic in town lately, and it's been busy, so I think that's all.
So I'm noticing that the, our visitors are more clean-cut than they have been in the past. Is this deceptive?
You know, I, Ron, I haven't made that.
Downtown, huh?
I'm assuming the European flair, but I guess in Europe, it's okay to do certain things that we find offensive here, so I'm only guessing that's the case, because those are those kind of complaints we've been getting. And again, some of the complaints range from folks with their dogs and being aggressive, and when business owners tell them to move on, they don't, magically, they do so when we show up, so that's been the case. We've arrested a gentleman the other day on a, I guess it was a warrant, he was wanted in, I want to say South Dakota, for pushing a lady outside a two-story building or something. He was actually one of the more pleasant people I've hauled to jail, but he was in the parking lot, apparently he was, I think the issue had to do that he stole his companion's marijuana. That's what got him arrested, so.
That's egregious.
It's also probably worthwhile to mention for the public that it is not allowed in city limits to panhandle aggressively.
Well.
Panhandle, it is not allowed to camp in parks or in public spaces, like we don't provide for that, so just so the people know, you know, you can't, yeah, you can't arrest.
Most of, most of the calls are panhandling and, and/or, I was going to say camping, but most of those folks don't hang around long enough, and so.
Lloydaring.
Yeah, the businesses call because they have vehicles, you know, hanging around there, and so it does help with our city lots that we don't allow parking overnight, otherwise I think we'd become a haven for that, so that's all.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Community Development, Dusty, do you have something?
Just a couple things, and I'll, I'll try to keep it quick. Previous meeting, we had the consultant up to discuss the housing element update with you, and I think we failed to forewarn you about some of the zoning code amendments that, that need to accompany that housing element update. I just wanted to briefly forewarn the council about those. There's a number of zoning code amendments that, that need to be completed to bring our zoning code up, to comply with state law, as well as occur so that the state is able to certify our housing element. Without completing those zoning code updates, they won't consider certifying our housing element. And again, housing element needs to be certified in order to, among other things, go after and be eligible for a number of grants that we'd like to compete for. The, some of those zoning code changes were actually identified in our previous housing element update, we've just failed to actually follow up on those now. At this point, many of those, it's not enough to just list them in the housing element, we actually need to complete them on this time around. Some of them include identifying one zoning to allow for emergency shelter. What was nice is that in the previous housing element update, we identified the zoning zoning for C2 as being the proper zoning to to accommodate that use. Providing definitions and use type for transitional and supportive housing. Again, these are, these are activities that the state identified to deal with the the homeless crisis in California. Uh, a number of other changes to help provide low-income housing in the communities in California, including Willets. Uh, for instance, allowing for the single-room occupancy use type and defining that in our zoning code. An example of that might be a motel maybe uh wants to rent out their rooms on an individual basis, uh, but it's a situation where you have either shared bathrooms or shared kitchens that is defined as a single-room occupancy use type and the state's asking our zoning code to accommodate that. Uh, density bonus is another one. Uh, you identify a tool for the city to be able to work with the developer to potentially have that developer provide some low in, low-income housing or set aside some housing for low-income use in exchange for allowing them to to increase density in their development project. So you might, zoning code allows X units per acre, uh, but if you set aside 10%, I'm just making up numbers, for example, uh, if you said, set aside 10% of units for low-income housing, uh, will allow you to to increase the density of your, your, your development. Um, state law says that the, that a jurisdiction will allow residential care facilities with six or fewer people uh to be permitted anywhere we allow residential uses.
Don't we already do that? Or is that not currently?
By practice, we do that. It's just not codified in our zoning code. Yeah. Uh, allow for second units in residential zonings. Um, revise zoning code to allow for reasonable accommodation for persons with disabilities. An example of that might be uh someone bought a single-family home and they're needing to put in a ramp in order to to access the front door, but that ramp's going to be within the front yard setback. Uh, rather than going through a variance, we would um allow that construction to happen within the setback without having to go through that procedure.
Does that stay with the property once it's sold or does, does that have to be dealt with under a new uh action?
Yeah, good question. Um, I, I'm not sure if if we could put a condition that the ramp had to be removed if if the house was later sold to somebody that didn't need that accommodation. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so anyways, these, these are the types of zoning changes that we're going to be bringing forward um to the council here in the near future, uh, either before or with the the housing element update itself. Um, and again, these are, these are tasks that were identified in our, in our previous housing element update, uh, and again, are to to bring consistency with state law and uh as well as um some of these items are required in order for the state to consider certifying our housing element update. There's been a lot of action going on with our airport, a few different projects. We recently um completed our pavement management program, um, again, identifying improvements uh that we'd like to see at the airport. Uh, we recently met um with FAA staff uh about our airport capital improvement plan. We received a number of grants from uh from the federal government and we're just prioritizing uh how we'd like to spend that money going into the future. And finally, a bigger one, uh, we just received the latest draft of our airport layout plan, ALP. Uh, so this shows um how we envision the, the layout for the future of the airport. Um, and uh, we'll be meeting tomorrow with the airport manager to look that over and uh and hopefully we'll be sending that onto the FAA for certification. And again, that's another important step uh to bring us into eligibility for a number of of improvement funds.
So we're learning things about the airport you had no idea about before.
I'm learning a lot about a lot of things I didn't know about before. Yeah, yeah, and that's one of them. Yeah, so, um, but yeah, a lot of good things happening, a lot of action and and I'm glad to say things are moving forwards, moving.
Good. Thank you, Dusty. And yes.
So our billing official's not here tonight, but I did want to report that um we did submit a letter um requesting or a letter of appeal to FEMA on the revised maps. And so we're waiting to hear from them as to what the next steps will be. But uh, if you recall, we hired a hydrologist to check the data that FEMA used in revising those maps and he uh found a number of very significant um inconsistencies. So those were listed in the letter and um we got it to them by the deadline. We had initially requested an extension of that appeal deadline and we're not granted that, but in the end, we were able to get the letter in in time.
Good.
And we got copies of that and I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate getting that letter.
Okay, do we have anybody from Public Works or Engineering, any reports that, I guess not.
No.
To sort of deflect some of the, the, the heat that the city is getting from those trees in the park. I'm sure a lot of people know that, that there is about four redwood trees that have been removed from across the street of the hospital. And there was a little bit of anxiety about that.
Do you know what they're doing with them?
Um, I don't, I think.
Who'd have looked at them at the dining room table?
They're being sold to somebody. The owner of the property is selling the lumber.
Oh.
Yeah.
They're big, yeah.
Yeah, they are.
They're sizable trees.
Um, okay, um, city council and committee reports, Emco?
Yes, uh, we met on the 3rd and it was an interesting meeting. We uh, we had quite a bit of discussion on the Ryan Creek Fish Passage Project, which is north of town. And I passed a piece of paper out to you of the routes that they're going to do and instead of digging up to put the 10-foot cupboards, they're putting in two 10-foot cupboards, they're going to push it through the, the bank. And that will be interesting to, to see how that happens. And.
Push them right through the dirt?
Yeah.
Well, I think they dig a hole first, don't they?
No, they just line it up and push it through.
They do this, that's crazy.
Anyhow, the thing that was interesting is that Caltrans came back to the Mendocino County and we had to divvy up over $300,000 for our share of, of the thing. Another interesting thing was that there were 15 prime contractors that wanted to do the job and came to the first meeting and only three contractors bid on the job. And the interesting thing for me and for us in Willets is that the Caltrans underestimated the cost of it and it was 49% underestimated.
Wow.
And which is quite a bit of money. And there's two other projects that are on the, what they call the Child's uh project and one of them is the Sherwood and the other one is Main Street. And um, we're going to really have to keep an eye that, that uh Caltrans spends a little money on it instead of trying to save some money. And that was, really came through loud and clear. And the rest of the cities are really um hard to sell the uh, the overage because we're not going to get any new roads or anything for at least two years. We've spent that much money on, on this overage of this, of the freeway and the different projects it went through. But uh, I just thought it was interesting how somebody could underestimate 49% of what it was going to cost and have that big of overage. So anyhow, it'd be interesting. Oh, and then they have to, they have to re-go and rebid it again and it has to be done and ready for them to cut the trees by March 1st because that's a, the nesting time. So any trees that they cut, they have to have them cut by the 1st and they're going to put it out for bid and try to get the trees cut by the 1st. Anyhow.
This is a 30-foot section of pipe weighs 58,000 pounds.
And you see how it's, it's, even with the bracing inside, it's still kind of.
Yeah.
Settled a little bit.
Yeah. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, Lafco?
Did not meet?
Uh, MTA, I think she's gone.
Not here.
Msoa, we met. Um, there wasn't anything really to report except that we have a new general manager.
What's her name? Louisa?
I was afraid, Louisa, right. Louisa.
Morris.
Morris.
Louisa Morris.
Very good, thank you. And um, yeah, Mike Sweeney's gone. Just poof into the night. Uh, League of California Cities?
Uh, has not met, but I, in the last meeting you were able to attend.
Yeah, or Arcata, right.
In that, um, I was elected in abstention to the, I think I've been serving as second vice president and I was maybe like next in line vice president. And so I, I communicated to Sarah Rounds, thank you, but I'm going to be stepping down off the council and so.
Lucky you.
Someone else is going to. They are eager for Northern California leadership in our group. So if anyone is interested in taking that on, I mean, they, I think would love the participation.
And I did get an email from Sarah um yesterday or today. Um, they're going to hold a special meeting before the term is up because Martin Shiel is also.
Not running.
Right. And um, so that's where, well, the group will select new officers, new officers.
It's a, and I should just say, it's a great organization and I learn stuff every time I.
Yeah, I served on.
You have to be a serving, yeah, you have to be a serving council member to do that.
Yeah. When, when, it's actually Jerry Mello asked me if I would like to be the next president. When I was there, I said, no, I, no, that's very much.
It is a lot of travel.
It is. Okay, Water and Waste Water Systems Committee did not meet. Revite Ed, I believe, met, yes.
Revite Ed met and I'll ask Dusty to back me up if I, or Bill, if I miss anything. Um, we had a really pretty productive meeting. We are finalizing the um draft proposal on a vacancy ordinance to bring forward to you all, um, based on the criteria that the council has set forward. We have plans and I think, Adrian, correct me if I'm wrong, we have plans to bring it forward to the full council at the.
No.
No.
You've changed those plans.
Okay, so it changes. But we're pretty close to bringing the draft for you all to, you know, we have recommendations. This is how we think we should do it. This is the process. Um, you know, Jim will have a chance to look over it uh more also before we see it up here, but uh, we're, I thought we had a pretty productive meeting as far as what the fees were, um, you know, with the registration timeline, things, things like that are. And we picked out some grammatical things that we thought could be better. Um, we also just, we got a brief update on the highway signage, but uh, Caltrans still hasn't, you know, gotten back to us too much as far as what can be done about that. But we have a lot of ideas on the committee um for good wayfinding signs that we could do in town so that people can find uh the businesses and the things that are going on. Alison Glassie at the museum said that she is actively pursuing putting up the sign that used to be for the museum on Paducah's Lot. He is amenable to that being put up again. It was knocked down and that says, you know, museum and the things are this way. Uh, so she's working on that and we talked about billboards a little bit more and things like that, so. That was it. Am I missing anything?
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, Finance Committee did not meet. Uh, ad hoc committees, do we still have any of them looking around?
Yes. Uh, oh wait, not ad hoc, sorry.
Okay. You were talking about other committees, the EDFC, she is not here, NCRRA, that would be you, I'm guessing.
Yes. Yeah, NCRRA met today in Healdsburg. Um, the main thing that's going on is there was a little kerfuffle having to do with train, train cars that have um liquid petroleum in them stored on the Shellville and site, um, siding in Shellville. Um, for those of you who know where Shellville is, it's, I believe it's just cows and things out there. There's, there's nothing out there, but there was a concern brought up by SMART, the area transit, about these trains being, so it was a bit of a thing, but uh, the railroad is in complete safety compliance and they have safety um things in place. It's actually more dangerous from a um security point of view to discuss them and where they are. Uh, so that was a little bit of a thing, but the, it, it led to some temporary interruptions in freight activity. Uh, so I think that is being dealt with. Also, there is lots of good action going on with freight activity. Doug Bosco is the person who runs the Northwestern Pacific Co. that operates the freight operations on the NCRAs rail line. And uh, they are having all sorts of companies down in the Petaluma area, you know, that are wanting to transport by rail, so that's really encouraging. One of the big groups that they want to work with is um, that they are working with is Mendocino Redwood Company. And they would like to be shipping logs out on the train, sorry, shipping, not the right, you know. They'd like to be utilizing um rail and it is much, um, it is affordable for them. But so far, it doesn't come up this, it doesn't come up this high. So, so they're talking about like a, you know, you drive them.
Like halfway down.
You have driven to one point. I think they're, I think they're, you know, hopefully, they're trying to move more north more rapidly.
Yeah.
But as of now, I think it's, you know, it's not quite to Cloverdale. The Cloverdale isn't open yet, but.
All right.
Obviously, the dream is to have it come to Willets.
They're still talking.
And we, we did discuss that and the financial picture is looking better.
Good. And then we have a, I don't know, what do we call it? A non-committee or undercover?
Working.
A working group. Working group, which is the Marijuana Ordinance Working Group. And we've had two meetings and um.
That have just been counted.
Yeah, it was two, two meetings with staff. And I have a, this is going to be published in the papers, correct?
I sent this out last night.
Right. Uh, this is a statement that will be in the newspapers, but I'll read it tonight anyway, which is the form of a report to the one member who's sitting here who's not in the meeting. The City of Willets will hold a series of public workshops to gather information for the development of commercial cannabis policy within city boundaries. The first commercial cannabis industry policy public workshop will be held on Tuesday, October 18th from 4:00 to 6:00 at City Hall in council chambers. This working group is composed of council members Orenstein and Madrigal, along with city staff, and is intended to hear comments from all interested parties in order to develop a balanced and informed plan that will result in a policy recommendation to the full city council for their consideration. Policy development will initially focus on indoor cultivation, manufacturing and testing, as well as all of the regulatory elements of commercial cannabis activities such as land use compatibility, odor and noise control, water usage, wastewater pretreatment, electric coal usage, hazardous materials handling, sensitive receptors, that is schools, parks, residential areas, et cetera, permitting process rates and fees, security and code enforcement. And on a personal note, as I said, we've had two meetings with the, the senior management and they were probably some of the most productive meetings I've been in in a long, long time. I mean, just sitting around the table and we hit the subjects, we discussed them, we came up with good ideas, research needs to be done and we're really taking the approach that this is a very complex matter that is going to be um addressed and studied very, very carefully before we take any kind of action. And we felt that we wanted to do all this groundwork in, with, with, with the staff and, and the council members before we opened it up to the public. So we have something to start with. We have a baseline. And what the purpose will be at this meeting will be to have, it's going to be a meeting where we're going to focus on these issues that I mentioned. And uh, we're going to try to limit speeches, you know. I mean, we're already past the point where most people have made their feelings known about how they feel about marijuana, whether pro or con. And um, you know, we got to be very careful that, to, 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 to keep it confined to the point of getting us to where we want to go and not just spending a lot of time talking at each other. So we'll see how it goes. It should be interesting.
What time is that?
It's at uh 4:00 PM, 4:00 to 6:00. We, we picked a time, you know, we, I realize that people are working and, you know, it, it's a balanced point, you know. You have city staff who's been working all day and, and, you know, if we make it a late meeting, then it's hard on them. If we make it in the middle of the day, obviously, people who work can't make it. So we figured this is a nice shoulder area. And um, you know, it would be the kind of thing that if, if you can't make it at 4:00, you can come at 5:00 and there will still be the, the ability to participate and make your feelings known.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
Uh, which I appreciate, not that we're going to restrict conversation, but we're going to try to keep it focused.
Yeah.
Um, but also I have heard from a number of people in the community, both that think this is a good idea or that think this is a horrible idea, and I really want to welcome all of those folks to come and weigh in.
And I really want to welcome all of those folks to come and weigh in. And that you and I have both said that we are making a specific effort to stay open-minded and just, you know, get the input for what, you know, hopefully we'll keep it focused to what we want to talk about. But I also heard some concern from some of the new council candidates coming in, saying, you know, that this is a big topic and they, they may or may not agree with the direction that the current council is going. And so I welcome them to come to that as well.
Absolutely.
It's a public meeting. This is going, this isn't going to be a, you know, quick and dirty process. We're going to try to air these issues. So that's an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, and, and to even build on that, the whole purpose of this thing is not to glorify or vilify this industry. It's, it's to come up with regulations and a plan that will protect, ultimately protect the citizens of the city. That's what it's all about. We're not, we're not looking to make anybody, you know, wealthy by opening up a marijuana company. We're not looking to make any kind of hardship for any of the citizens. The focus is on the citizens of this community, to protect them and, and protect the quality of life we have in this town. And, and, you know, that, that's the important thing. Okay? Council member reports and recommendations.
Got two. There was a article in the World Weekly about the, I think there's a local business that has a charging station at their hotel, maybe. I just wanted to let folks know it was, it was stated that that was the only charging area and to let people know that we actually do have a charging station on the City of Willets building that's been here for some time. It's not a Tesla superspeed charging station, but it is right here across from the farmer's market and, you know, it is a public access point.
And we have also been engaged in conversations with a couple of different agencies to get one or more charging stations throughout the community.
Yeah, because I think that that's up and coming. And one of the things on our consent calendar was the item regarding Toby Dale. And I'm just wondering if there's any, are there any retirement festivities planned for her?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay, but hopefully we'll have a chance to thank her.
Okay. And did you have something, Larry?
No.
You were breathing, I saw you look like.
I do that quite a bit.
I'm trying to anticipate words coming from you. I, I visited our water plant yesterday and sadly, it's the first time I've done that in over 10 years and I, and I regret that. Yeah.
It's neat, right?
You know, it's completely different from what I saw the first time. And that was one thing, the physical plant and all the equipment they have up there. Have you been there, Bill?
No.
You really should. You should visit that.
How can I do that?
You.
Contact, yeah.
But what I was most impressed with, I spent about an hour just standing in the office with Scott and his two operators. And I got to tell you, you know, I know this sounds silly when I, I say this continually, but I am, I am constantly impressed with the quality of people that we have working for the city. I mean, I'm a cynic. I'm from the East Coast and, you know, I don't trust anything. And I look at, and my, my experience has been in the private sector, you know, for 20, 30 years, working in, in industry. And all that time, I have had to watch my back because that's the culture. Someone's always out to get you. So I literally spent half my time watching my back and the other half, if I was lucky, doing my job. So I, you know, I'm standing here with these guys and we're talking about the water system and how they operate the stuff. And it's impressive. I mean, it's all computerized and I asked questions about, you know, what happens if this happens? You know, what do you do with that? And all the answers are, I mean, everything is, is perfect as far as I'm concerned. So, so I said to them, I said, "Why are you guys doing this?" And they looked at me kind of strange. I can't understand why. I said, "You know, you're so dedicated. You really want to do your job." You, I mean, one of the guys lives on Pine Mountain. He doesn't, he's not on city water. The other guy, the other two in the room do live in the city and they use city water. So I said, "What do you care what the water is like?" You know, I mean, you can do your job to the minimum level to keep your job. Just get by and you'll, you'll be fine. But here you are going this extra step. What's the matter with you? Why? And, and, you know, I guess they thought I was losing it, but, you know, this is a question that bothers me, not bothers me, but intrigues me when I, when I see people like that because like I say, I'm not used to seeing that. And it's just because, the answer was because it's the right thing to do. And I thought, huh, there's a concept. And then I realized that's what we do too, you know, we, we're not getting anything special out of the thing. And here we are, we're doing the best we can. So there, it's, it's very gratifying for me to know that there are people in this world who really, really care about doing a good job. And I am very proud of our city staff.
As am I. We have a very stellar staff in every department and it takes all of us.
It does. And even, you know, with our committee meetings with, with marijuana, at the first meeting, we went over some things. We said, "Okay, we need this information, that information." And a week later, we had the next meeting and by God, there was the information. And I thought, "What is this?" So, you know, I mean, I'm getting used to it. I really am. But I'm afraid to really accept it because it might go away. But I'm, I'm just really proud of this group.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 12, enactment of ordinances.
I move the recommended action.
Okay, we want to tell somebody what this recommended?
Yeah.
Just for the heck of it, in case you don't know. This was in September 26th, we adopted, or we, what did we do?
We introduced.
We introduced. "An ordinance authorizing implementation of a community choice aggregation program within the City of Willets by participating with Sonoma Clean Power Authority", which means that all citizens in the city will now be able to buy their electricity. That's just electricity, right? We're not talking about natural gas.
Yeah.
Will be able to buy it from Sonoma Clean Power, who gets their power from clean sources. So that, that's what the council voted to, to pass and now tonight, we're going to adopt it.
The action also needs to include adoption and waive the reading of the ordinance.
I move we adopt and waive the reading of the ordinance authorizing implementation of a community choice aggregation program within the City of Willets by participating with the Sonoma Clean Power Authority.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second because it's a.
I, I think that the people in the community need to know that they do not have to do this. They can bow out by and just let, go naturally, have PG&E just like they have now and whatever. And there'll be a time when, when it will be up to you to do whatever you need to do. But you will have to write a letter saying that you do not want to use this, that you want to go keep with PG&E.
That is a good point because it's the opt-out process and people have to take action if they don't want to go into this thing. And we're.
And we can help people.
We're going to also publicize that, so we're not going to leave it up to Sonoma Clean Power to do that solely. We'll also be publicizing that heavily. For example, putting it on our water bills. Wanted to mention that the program will not go into effect until July 1st of next year.
Okay. And when, so the opt-out date wouldn't start until after July 1st? Or?
Not sure, but we'll be looking at all of those documents and I believe it'll be a form, an opt-out form.
Good.
You know, a person won't have to just come up with a letter on their own.
All right, good. Thank you for that, Larry. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Let's have a vote poll.
Public comment.
Public comment? Do we have any public comment? I'll know with this thing. I'm still learning. Okay, we have none, so let's take a roll poll vote. Yes. Okay, and we have good welfare. Any of them, animals?
My Giants did not make it last night. It was a soul-crushing game.
Oh, really?
It was a roller coaster of a game, but I have stated that if the Giants didn't make it, I was going to root for the Cubs and I'm rooting for the Cubs. It can't be the Dodgers, I mean.
Man, I wonder why it was cloudy today. Okay, we have no closed session and thereby we will.